Good evening. This is the February 2017 Zoning Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Mr. DeGua and Mr. Thomas have advised that they will not be able to attend. And so far, we haven't seen Ms. Ferrante. Mr. Tuzola?
Here.
Mr. Vassino?
Here.
Mr. Gettinger?
Here.
Mr. Sota?
Here.
Ms. Huber happy?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also present this evening are Meg Green, our Recording Secretary, and Stephen Harris, our Zoning Officer. I'd like to welcome to our board this evening Ben Gettinger. Ben is starting with us this evening. He's been with the Planning and Zoning Board for several years, so he does have a lot of expertise in zoning, so welcome, Ben. Sarah is missing this evening so far, if she comes then. In the meantime, Jean, would you please fill in for Sarah this evening? Okay? If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their hearing, please let us know. Otherwise, let's...
Item number one, 622-624-626, Gulf Street, MPB 28/520/26, in an R-18 zone. Attorney Kevin Crusaden for G.H. Ward and successors, owner. Section of the zoning regulations subject for variance requests, Prop. Lot 1. Vary section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by a building. Vary section 3.1.1.1 to allow two single-family detached residents on one lot. Vary section 2.5.5, access width frontage to 10 feet where 25 feet required. Vary section 3.1.4, side yard setback to 6 feet where 15 required. In addition, Prop. Lot 2, vary section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section 2.5.5, access width frontage to 10 where 25 required, lot that may not be considered generally rectangular in shape.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Crusaden. My office is at 26 Cherry Street here in Milford. Just a few items before we get started. I had turned over the notice letters with the certificates of mailing as well as the affidavits for the signposting and the mailing of those notices to Ms. Green tonight and earlier this week. I would like, as you know, we were here last month for a similar application. I would like to make that file and that application part of this record. And towards that end, I've included the minutes from last month in the package that you have, and I've also included a CD from last month, which has the video of the hearing. And I'd like, respectfully, like to make that part of the record. We...I had provided a package, and I'm not going to recap everything that we've gone through, since it's only been about 25 to 30 days since you've heard this. There's some new information. I wanted to highlight what's new and what's different. The additional information is stuff that you've seen already as part of the application for last month. I should mention that with me tonight is Mr. George Ward, the applicant, and Matt Duchesne, professional engineer from Malone &amp; McBroom, the agency that...the firm that performed the survey and prepared the plans. And both gentlemen were here last month as well. We had a very complex application last month with a lot more variances than we're asking for this month. At that hearing, there was many comments and suggestions and concerns from the board, and everyone was very engaged, for the most part, with the application, and we appreciated that. Mr. Ward took those comments to heart, and he went back with Malone &amp; McBroom, and we've filed a different application. As part of it, different options were investigated and researched. Not all of the suggestions were able to come to fruition as part of the plan. I'll get into that in a minute when I go through the package that's been handed out. But the result is basic, is a further refined application from what was presented last month, and that had been a result of a number of months of work by the applicant with the engineers. But we've reduced the total number of variances requested from 18 down to seven. And as I had said last month, I was conservative in requesting the variances. Some of those variances, like, for example, rectangular in shape, I think we meet that now, but I kept that in as a variance request. And I'll show you the...if you don't have the site plan with you or the proposed site plan with you, I'll...it'll be on the PowerPoint slide in a minute. And I also just...as I mentioned last month, but I need to say it again for the record, I disagree with Mr. Harris about the requirement for 25 feet of frontage. That's not in the regulation. The requirement is a 20-foot five...20-foot, excuse me, 25-foot wide accessway. And also, we disagreed on what the meaning of private accessway was, and it's obviously going to remand our position that we have a private accessway. It's deeded private in the...into Mr. Ward's deed. The same accessway is deeded privately in different language to the other property owners that share that access drive off Old Field Lane. You also heard...what we heard last month mainly from the board was the board did not want to set a precedent for undersized lots. And I think the real...the critical malfunction or fault with the application was, from what I understood from the board, was the undersized lots. They were at a half an acre or a little bit under a half an acre where an acre is required for a rear lot. We've made...the lots now are over an acre. Slightly over an acre, about 1.1 and 1.2 acres apiece. Additionally, we heard some comments from the neighbors, although largely in support with the number of letters that we received and the few neighbors that came out last month. There was a concern about keeping that private access drive as a, you know, country-type private driveway and not expanding it or improving it to what they have now. So we did not change the access drive or attempt to seek approval from the neighbors to widen that. I'll just go highlight...so this is the variances requested now that Mr. Vassino has already read. So you see, for one lot, it's four variances, and for the other lot, it's three variances. Section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. We're asking that because right now, there is an existing lot that has three structures on it actually, or actually, four structures, four or five structures, but three houses. So some of these are duplicate, but Prop. Lot number two, it really is just the access width is really what's going to...what the variance we're seeking, although technically, I kind of overreached or was pretty conservative about the number of variances we were requesting just to make sure we covered everything. I think Mr. Harris might disagree that we've covered everything, but I'll talk about his administrative summary or the DPLU's administrative summary in a minute. These are the previous variances requested. You can see the other significant change, other than increasing the size of the lots, was that we had three lots proposed in the rear versus the two that we're proposing now, and that was based on comments and feedback from the board. So there's a significant number of variances requested, seven, seven, and I think four, if you can read down at the...if you can read down here. So that, I think, came to 18 variances, and I said we had reduced it to seven. Here's just a side-by-side table list. I don't know if you can see it from there. I did not print that out for the application. I wanted to try to keep it as simple as possible. But you can see, once again, it's just a different way of explaining what's changed from the application, from last month's application. By the way, this table doesn't show all the variances requested because there wasn't a way to really quantify table 2.5.4. We are asking for...I'll go back just a minute. One of the differences is under Prop. Lot 1 from last month, we didn't ask for this variance because it was an existing structure. It's kind of questionable whether we need to ask for it or not. I mean, it's a gray area of the law rather than have an issue later on if this was to be approved. I thought I would ask for it now, this time around. That's the side yard setback to 6 feet where 15 feet's required, and that's on the north...northwesterly property line with the existing house. I think Mr. Sota last month asked where...how far...what the distance was from that, so we've asked for that again. So that's in addition to what we...this is just conceptually. We've gone from two...three lots to two. Rear lots are larger than one acre. And there were multiple setback variances required with part of the last application because, as you remember, we were trying to carve out those two existing houses in the back, and it...I think this is actually a better application. This is just the overview for members on the board who either weren't here or just as a refresher. That's the site, overhead view of the site. This is the 622, that's Gulf Street, the house fronting on Gulf Street. This is the rear access drive in back, and these are the two other structures. And this is the actual shape of the property. It's a really unique shape, as we discussed last month. This is just a GIS version of it, which gives it a little bit wider view for you. And the reason I have this slide in there is because this is that private access drive off of Old Field Lane that's...we think it's about 10 feet wide or so. This is the proposed site plan. I can expand it on here if you need to. You may also have the full-size copies. Here's kind of a closer view of it. You can see the lots are generally rectangular in shape. This one, I guess it's questionable whether it's rectangular in shape. I looked at the definition of rectangle, and actually, you could probably...a lawyer could probably stretch that to mean that that's rectangular. I think we asked for the variance anyway. They're fuller-sized lots. It's a nicer, cleaner, streamlined version of what was proposed before. This is just a zoning map. I'll go back to that in a minute. You've seen the same slide. I think there's an additional letter in support this month, number 14. Mr. Wisnewski was not able to come tonight because of Valentine's Day, so he offered a letter in support instead of coming and speaking in favor of it, which brings me...I just wanted to point out, my clients advised me that there's several other folks that would have came that either came last month or would have liked to have come this month, but because of the...because of the date, the Valentine's Day date, they weren't able to make it. Mr. Wisnewski, Mealy, who came last month, Frank Luparello, Mr. Frank Luparello, and the Tuppers, I don't know, maybe these folks are behind me in the audience, but I was told earlier today they probably wouldn't come. And some of them have given letters in support anyway. So once again, you can see it's very significant. For doing this for a number of years now, this is the most neighbor support I've ever seen for a variance application. It's pretty remarkable, actually, what it is. And I think that's because, and I mentioned it in the memo last month and this month, I think that's because it's really not changing the site. It's not an intense use. It's not a multifamily use. It's not...it's not an unreasonable request. I think it speaks also to Mr. Ward's standing in the neighborhood and his years of...years of being a Milford resident. These are just kind of backup slides from last month. That's the original...that's the earliest map we could find. It's not recorded on the land records, but somebody dug it up somewhere. I don't think it's recorded on the land records. It's from 1918. That just shows the original property. That's the survey. I wanted to point out, the only thing that I didn't talk about last month is there is a sewer easement that runs through here that was granted a few years ago. I don't...I don't...maybe it was five or 10 years ago, between Mr. Ward and the adjoining property owner where the sewer runs in off of there and across the property. So that impacts, you know, the location of those houses as well, the ability to move those houses. I'll just briefly touch on the legal argument. Our argument's the same as last month, we're reducing the nonconformities. There is case...we talked about how the variance law has changed a lot in the past couple of years. Variances are, according to the Supreme Court of Connecticut, much more difficult to...much more difficult to obtain. But there's still certain aspects, one of them being when you're reducing a nonconformity. And it's our position, we are reducing a nonconformity because right now, we have three houses on...we have three houses on one lot, and we, in an attempt to reduce it, what we thought would be, from a comprehensive view, reduce the nonconformities to a greater extent, we had come in with the houses in the back, you know, divided into two separate lots back there. And we're still reducing the nonconformity because we're going from three houses or residential units on one lot where one...where one unit's allowed. We're reducing it down to one and then two and then a vacant lot. Our hardships that have been stated, you've heard them, it's the topography of the lot. It drops off. It's like 18-foot or 20...I'll give you the information from Gulf Street here. I'll address this part of Mr. Harris's memo now. He said that that's not any different, the topography's not any different, the terrain's not any different than the rest of the neighborhood. Number one, I disagree with that comment. You've all driven by...you've all driven by there. You see, as you go up, that this property becomes...it's at a higher elevation than the other properties. Yeah, do they have...do they have retaining walls or distance and, I guess, elevation differences between them and this Gulf Street? Yes, they do, but not to the same extent. That's first. And number two, that's not the legal standard. The legal standard is not whether it's the same or similar to properties in the neighborhood. It's similar to properties in the zone. And that's the reason for the zoning map, is that the R-18 zone stretches...it's the yellow...it's hard to see on here, but it's the yellow, and there's three different shades of yellow on there. But R-18, it's over here. This is the property area. But R-18 is over on this side. It's up over here. Some of those are R-30, so I don't want to misspeak, but you get the picture. So it's...I think this property is unique as far as the size. It's unique as far as the neighborhood. It's unique as far as the zone, and I think it's unique as far as the city. The hardship...the hardship arises out of the enactment or out of the...out of the regulation. And over time, this property has basically sat in this configuration with these three units on there since the early 1900s. The lot was created prior to zoning. It wasn't part of an official subdivision map. Those didn't exist. There was no one there to approve a subdivision map, or there was no body in existence to do so. So as I mentioned last month, the neighborhood has grown up around the site, and because of the terrain, the drop-off, there's not a realistic access point. So there is...there is a legal hardship here. There's a traditional legal hardship in addition to the hardship of reducing a nonconformity. Mr. Harris has brought up last month and this month that we're subdividing by variance and that we're not allowed to do that, and you can't approve variances for lots that don't exist. That's not true. In fact, the same court that said you can reduce a variance can be granted for reducing a nonconformity instead of a traditional hardship using the reduction in nonconformity, the court in Vine said, "But whether the variance will eliminate a nonconforming use that predated the regulations, that's the question. And if a variance will render the use of the property more conforming by allowing the property owner to create a new lot, the justification for granting the variance is no less compelling." So basically, they've said in that hearing that you can create a new lot by granting a variance. As I mentioned last month, we still have to go to Planning and Zoning for a subdivision approval if we're approved here. You are not doing a subdivision application tonight. It's the variances that we need in order to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Board with a subdivision application and site plan applications. If what Mr. Harris was saying were true, I guess I could actually put this in the form of a question. If someone came to the board, and maybe Mr. Harris can answer this later, with a rear lot that was .9 acres or, you know, .99 acres and had a 24-foot wide accessway, and they needed...they needed that lot approved, I mean, could they not come to this board and request those variances? It's a similar situation here. It's just compounded with the...with the number of requests. Once again, the test is not whether it's hardship unique to the properties in the neighborhood. It's unique to the properties in the zone. I talked about neighborhood support. You've seen that. I'll just briefly go over, mention the letters, and talk a couple of comments about Mr. Harris's letter, and that will be it. So we have, for the benefit of the record, we have neighbor letters in support, 1 through 14. It's Thomas Mealy, John DeGrand, Raphael Amaya, Amaya, Bevan Hollingsworth, who's a tenant at 38 Ranch Road, Derek and Jennifer Del Segno, Stephen and Maureen Worgo, George O'Connell, Cecily Rickard, Joe Blickfield, Sue Gavin, Robert Hartman, Edward Link, Francis Luparella, and Mr. and Mrs. Wisnewski have signed letters in support. So those are the letters that are in the package. We also investigated, based on board comments, specifically Mr. Sota, the question about moving the houses. And immediately after that hearing, we started talking about investigating that avenue. Towards that end, Mr. Ward hired Thomas Turente, consulting or professional engineer, to investigate that and see if that was something that was viable. His letter is in your package as well. He mentioned 624 Gulf Street and 626, which are the two rear lots. I won't go into the...I won't read the entire letter. It's in your package. But he basically says at the bottom of the first page, the last paragraph, "Based on the foregoing, it is our professional opinion that the lack of access below much of the structures, coupled with the compromised physical condition and configuration of various framing and foundation elements, renders it technically infeasible to lift, move, and/or connect the structures in a safe and reasonable manner. The likelihood of extensive damage or destruction to the two structures outweighs the likelihood of a successful lift and relocation. It is therefore my recommendation not to lift or relocate either of those structures." Also in your package is the minutes from last month that I wanted to include that because we have the neighborhood comments. There's a picture I had mentioned. 628 Gulf Street was a house that existed also in the back of the lot. There was four units here, and I might be a little bit off with the location of it, but I think it was somewhere around here with 628 Gulf Street. It was destroyed by a fire in the early 80s. So there actually was four units at one point in time up, I guess in the early 80s. I included the quick claim deed just so you can see that there's a private...there's a deeded private accessway across that right of access. And now, finally, with respect to Mr. Harris's letter, I touched on some of the comments I talked about the new nonconforming use. Yeah, there's a couple of variances. Some of them are fairly routine that this board would grant all the time that we're asking for in order to reduce the overall nonconformity. We don't agree that there's accessory structures in the front yard. The reason for that is, is the chicken coops, I think that Mr. Harris is referring to, are right here. They're outside of the front yard setback. And also, it's a question of what's really considered the front yard because they're rear lots and there's no...there's no street to front on. And there's a definition of rear lot from your regulations that says between the front wall of the principal building and the street line. Now, in previous types of development and applications where you have either two front yards or a corner street, or it's a through lot or something like that, I've worked with staff before, and they basically say, "You pick the front yard. You know, you tell us which one's the front yard, then we'll go," you know? So I don't think that that's a...I don't think that's a legitimate grounds to turn this down, to not approve this or to make us come back and ask for a variance for the chicken coops that are in the front yard. There's no private means of access, according to Mr. Harris. I've already talked about that. That's incorrect. There is driveway access on remaining Lot 3. It's an existing driveway, but you can't...this board is not in a position to grant a variance for access. That is a...that's part of the Planning and Zoning subdivision regulations. So we would have to come in for a vari...not a variance, but we'd have to go to Planning and Zoning as part of a subdivision application, and then they can waive that requirement. That's one of the only require...one of the few requirements a Planning and Zoning Board can legally waive. So both state law, according to Vine, and your own regulations allow you to approve these variances. Just because you approve these variances does not mean that the lot is subdivided. We still have to go through the subdivision process. We have to get waivers for at least the access from Gulf Street. And this 2.5.4, I'll just highlight once again, no lot shall be formed from part of a lot already occupied by a building unless all yards and open spaces complied with. We've asked for a variance from this because we have the setback issue and we have some other regulations that we're asking for a variance, but you're legally allowed to consider this and grant this variance. If you do decide to either turn it down or to approve it, you are supposed to put on the record your reasons for doing so in order for that to be a valid approval or denial. Pending your questions, that completes the presentation. Thank you for your patience.
Any questions for Mr. Crusaden? Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Attorney Crusaden, could you go back to that 1918 survey you had? Now, that original property included that other house. So that property was subdivided sometime. Do you know when that was done?
Yeah, I noticed that when I was doing the research. I don't know...it was not...I don't want to misspeak and give you the incorrect information. It was done...it was done a long time ago. But yeah, so on this map, if you can't really read it, but I think it says something like four acres or...it's another...it's a little bit larger than what the survey shows now. That's correct. Yep.
So and then with the house that burned, originally the property had five houses on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It depends on the timeline because these houses in the back, although legal houses, pre-existing, nonconforming, at one point in time, there was a barn that was converted into a house. So it depends on the year to whether it would be five or four houses. And when this...when this subdivision was done, it was quite some time ago. I think it was before the zoning regulations, but I'm not 100% sure.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking on this, in favor of this?
I think that division came in the 20s. It was...
We need you to identify yourself again, please.
George Ward, 622 Gulf Street. Can you hear me? That was done during the 20s for a cousin Lois that was a cousin of the families back then. That's all I know about that. At the last meeting, I heard what the board had to say. I took your suggestions and I hope addressed your concerns. The neighbors loved the old plan, and they love this plan. They signed letters of approval approving what they saw on this plan. There were many neighbors who would come and speak tonight, but due to the fact that it's Valentine's Day and they had obligations with their family and their spouses, they just couldn't make it. A few...a few neighbors are here. And as far as the 10-foot drive that was mentioned, I've known since 1954 that there's never been a problem there, and I never heard of a problem before that period of time. My next-door neighbors at 612, the Mealy's, had a wedding there this past summer that was mentioned at the last meeting with over 200 people, and there were no problems at all. I've had a...since 1961, I've had a high school reunion there every four years, and we had a class of 280 with high attendance, and we've never had a problem there. a class of 280 with high attendants, and we've never had a problem there. There's been major construction at 596, the Wasnuski House, with the property being ripped down, and construction equipment and materials being delivered, and landscaping and all. There was never a problem with the driveway of the neighbors during that period of time, as with the Tool House, that was, that 606 that was torn down and rebuilt, maybe 15, 16 years before that. As far as emergency equipment coming in and out, 612 was owned by Murphy, and he had heart problems and cancer, and emergency equipment got in and out of there quite easily with no problems. And the same with Tool at 606, when he got ill, emergency equipment were in and out of there with no problems. There's never been a problem with FedEx trucks coming and going, or people coming and going, and it's been high volume at various times. I hope that I've addressed your concerns as of the last meeting, and you will approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Good evening, John DeGrand, I live at 36 Evening Side Drive, and I'm the budding property owner to where George wants to form on these lots, and I have no problem with it, and I support this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Anyone else, please?
Joe Blickfeld, 650 Gulf Street, I'm adjacent to the Ripley Lot. Again, I would speak in favor, I think it puts to bed the future of this particular area for the rest of the time, and it would make people feel comfortable, they know what they're going to be dealing with in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone in opposition to this application? Any questions, gentlemen, ladies? Any questions? No? Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, just some clarifications on the regulations. Mr. Crusaden said, talked about the private access. Section 2.5.5 requires a private means of access per lot. It doesn't say you can have multiple rear lots share a private means of access. Also, the front yard is defined in Section 11.2, which is definitions, and that is the area between the front wall of the house and the front property line. So the accessory structures are in between the front wall of the existing house and the front property line, therefore, they're inside the front yard. And I would also urge you to read the DPLU administrative summary, if you haven't already, and Meg, if we have a copy for the record, we have, okay, I would just urge you to read that, because that lays out the department's thoughts.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Sodha.
Mr. Harris, don't they do a lot of times, one shared driveway to two lots? Wasn't there one just, that went through Planning and Zoning in Point Beach that was in the flood area, just recently, like, five, six months ago? Wasn't that one driveway for two houses?
I'm unaware of that. No one's ever come to me and asked me that question, can I do this? Can I have two lots share a driveway? Or two rear lots share a driveway? No one's ever asked me that question, since I've been here.
I'm just not, I've seen it around town a lot, I just didn't know.
I've seen it around town, too. I've looked on the maps, and you'll see a lot of, usually in the older parts of town, you'll see a driveway that serves two lots. But unless you do the research to figure out where that driveway came from, what's the backstory, what are the circumstances, is there cross-easement, is there not? Was it done by handshake in 1910, and, you know, it's now, you know, 117 years later or whatever, and nobody knows where it came from? So there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes with one driveway and two lots, and unless you do the research, you really can't make an intelligent answer.
Mr. Crusaden, do you have any other comments as to what Mr. Harris has just said?
Yeah, I mean, we could go back and forth, I think, on these regulations. The problem with them is they're not always 100% clear. I'm just not, I have this, this is 2.5.5, I just, I'm not seeing where it says that you need a, that one lot per one private drive, I just see private means of access to that lot, and that's what we have, and that's what we would continue to have. So I just don't, I don't read that the same way. And then with respect to the front yard, I don't know that we've identified that as our front yard, number one, and secondly, because it's not towards the street line, I don't know what street line, we're talking about rear lots, but also, the second sentence is the depth of the required front yard. So it talks about front yard, but then it talks about required front yard, and the required front yard is the setback, and we're, we're not encroaching on the setback. So these regulations are a little bit gray with respect to the definitions.
Mr. Chairman, I can read from Section 2.5.5.
Mr. Harris, can you speak ready to that microphone, though? Please?
Well, it reads, I'll just skip to the relevant part, it talks about rear lots, and then it says, "Or you can have a rear lot for an industrial or commercial property, or one single-family dwelling in an applicable district may be permitted on a lot of one or more acres, provided that a private means of access of at least 50 feet wide for offices, or 25 feet wide for a dwelling." So it's not talking about one accessway serving multiple lots, it's talking about, you read the regulation when you read it as a whole, it's talking about, you can have a rear lot with a private means of access. So logically, if you have more than one rear lot, you have multiple means of access, one per lot, where the regulation reads.
All right, so the regulation is reading, if you need a private access for each...
Per lot, yes.
Per lot. Per lot.
I disagree with that completely. I don't, I don't see that in there, it does not say one private accessway per lot anywhere in that regulation. I think that's really overreaching. That's, that's the regulation right there.
Mr. Harris, are you reading that right out of our zoning book?
I'll just read the whole thing.
It's right there on the screen.
Lot is a singular, lot is a singular word, it means one, not lots. I can read the whole thing if you'd like, read the whole thing under the record. It simply says, "No zoning permit or building permit shall be issued for any building unless the lot upon which such building is to be erected fronts on a municipally acceptable street, on an accepted public street, or on a street in an approved subdivision, except that one allowable office, business, industrial, or other non-residential use in an applicable zoning district, or one single-family dwelling in an applicable district may be permitted on a lot of one or more acres, provided that a private means of access of at least 50 feet in width for such office, business, industrial, or other non-residential use, or 25 feet in width for such dwelling as applicable, shall be provided to an accepted public street or street in an approved subdivision. Such rear lot shall have 150-foot minimum lot width and depth, exclusive of accessways, and shall be generally rectangular in shape. The required lot area shall not be included in the area of the private means of access. This provision shall not be deemed to prevent the issuance of a zoning permit and building permit for farm or accessory buildings not designed or used for human occupancy. Such access, or said access for such office, business, industrial, or other non-residential use shall not be included in the required area of the lot or any other lot." Now, it's talking about lots in singular. You can have a rear business lot, a rear dwelling lot, and each lot has to have a private means of access. If that doesn't mean that it means what it says, and then, I don't know. A lot is a lot, it's not, you can't construe a lot to be multiple lots.
Yeah. That, yeah, just, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but that's not correct. I mean, it clearly says, "One single-family dwelling in an applicable district may be permitted on a lot of one or more acres, provided that a private means of access of at least 25 feet in width for such dwellings shall be provided to an accepted public street." So we have that, we have, except for the two houses that are, would be on the one proposed lot, the additional proposed lot has one acre. It does not have the 25 feet, that's one of our variance requests, and it has a private means of access. So we meet all of those criteria, that's, respectfully, that's not a correct reading of that regulation.
And just to beat the dead horse, I believe my interpretation's correct. Well, yeah, I had read that in the book, my, you know, in our zoning book, so it's a difference of opinions here on, and how to interpret it out of our zoning books, so it's, we would be going against the regulation if we were to approve this. And I understand, and you know, you've done a lot of work on this, and we appreciate all of that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the public hearing is still open, so if your thoughts are veering towards a discussion amongst the merits, you should probably wait until all of the testimony is in, and the public hearing is closed, or eventually closed.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Attorney Crusaden, I read your engineer's report, and I kind of disagree with it, because it says it has new TGI floor joists, and it has conventional, conventional wood joists, and maybe the part on the slab has to be demoed, but the house could, you know, if you brought a report from a house lifter in that said it can't be done, because, I mean, some of these houses down on the beach, they're sitting 12 inches off the ground, and they dig underneath them, and they get the I-beams under them, and get them raised, so I still think that, you know, the house could be moved. If the house couldn't be moved, would your client be in favor of, like, demoing one of the houses? Because I'm, I'm against the two-on-one lot, but the driveway part, I can live with that, because it's been there for 100 years, and it's served those houses. But the two-on-one is what I'm having a problem with.
Well, in response to that, that's what, the original application, last month, you know, had those lots divided, so it was one in each lot, but the lots were undersized. We haven't had the conversation about demoing it, I doubt that he would probably demo a house in order to move it or to relocate.
It's a lot cheaper to move it and demo and, you know, rebuild one on the other lot.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to get with my client on that.
Well, we still have a lot of thinking to do on this application, we don't have to vote on it this evening. We have how many from today? 65 days to make a decision on this?
You can't, your options are, you can close the public hearing and vote on it, you can hold the public hearing open till next month. When the public hearing is closed, you have 65 days to render a decision, and the applicant has 65 days worth of extensions if they want to exercise them.
What are your thoughts on leaving this open and not making a decision this evening? Ms. Happy?
I would defer. I would defer for a while, I think it deserves more discussion.
Any other thoughts?
I certainly think that we could take more time to review this. We've received a lot of information just this evening, and I think we have some, I think we owe it to the city, and to review the information and give them a good overall research of it.
Go ahead, Mr. Sodha.
I guess maybe leave the hearing open, and maybe give the applicant time to consult the house mover to see if it can be moved.
Okay, that's just one of the, one of the things, but all the other information we have here, you know, if this, if this had come to us from the planning and zoning, and the lot was subdivided, things would be a lot different, so, so we can probably leave this open. Do we need a motion to leave this hearing open?
Yes.
Who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to leave the hearing open till next month.
Second. Okay, this hearing will be open till next month. Mr. Harris, do we have to vote on that motion to leave it open?
Voice vote's fine. All in favor to keep the hearing open, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, item number two. Two...
Hold on. Did we tap the votes?
What?
I didn't hear.
I believe all of her in favor, everyone was in favor of leaving the hearing open till next month, it was unanimous.
Okay, item number two, 229 Bridgeport Avenue, MPB, 18/200/13, in a CDD-2 zone. Dan Rizzo, agent for Devon Investments LLC, owner, vary Section 5.5.4.2. Tavern and cafe liquor license require to allow location for, of cafe closer than 1,500 feet. To nearest permitting is Bridgeport Flyer at 248 Bridgeport Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Dan Rizzo. I have here with me a list of the 12 budding businesses, the affidavit notarized, the form letter that was sent out, as well as the PS Form 3665. I apologize, I misread the instruction sheet, and I did not get this into Meg prior to this meeting, but I have had it on hand for several weeks now. If you'll allow me to continue, I'd gladly...
Is that something that we need?
Did you, you mean the notification materials, or?
I'm sorry?
What is it, you, you didn't give me the notification materials?
I didn't get any returns.
You didn't get the...
Are you referring to this?
Yeah, if you want to submit that now, you can.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have the affidavit, too, or?
Okay, go ahead, continue. Can you raise that microphone a little closer to you, please? Thank you.
Better? Okay. So basically, what we would like to do, the reason that we're filing for this variance is because our current location is only zoned for a restaurant liquor license, and we would like to have a cafe license. Our main goal for this is to avoid having to build a wall in between, basically in the center of our restaurant, dividing what would be 600 feet of a restaurant area from what would be basically the rest of the restaurant bar. And honestly, to avoid confusing customers by having to have a rear entrance, which is strictly for, I guess, minors, or anybody under the age of 21 who wants to dine in our restaurant. We don't get a lot of customers under 21 at all. Any customers that we do get that are under 21 are always accompanied by a parent or a guardian, and I really don't see a reason why building this wall, I guess, would be necessary for a restaurant like ours. I would also make the argument that maybe 20% of our total sales are actually from the kitchen, the other 80% are from the bar area. So we're, I guess we're less of a restaurant than we are a bar or a tavern. I don't know if that makes any difference to the case, but, yeah, I guess our goal really would just be to not have to build this wall. I mean, we've spent about, well, we spent tens of thousands of dollars renovating this place, mainly so that we can open it up and have kind of a more suitable... mainly so that we can open it up and have kind of a more suitable environment, something more fun for our customers, something more open. We have community tables where people can sit together and it's kind of, it's, it's a lot different than it was. I really don't know how to explain that. But it's really just an area where people can have fun and it's open. People can have conversations literally across the room. If we build this wall, it really kind of, I'm worried that it might ruin what we've spent so long and so much to build out. So yeah, with that, that's, that's my argument.
When did all this come about? When you started your remodeling, then this changed where you would have to have a cafe as opposed to a restaurant?
So we were working with somebody who used to work with the Liquor Commission, a guy, he is, he's actually, he holds our liquor license. His name is Ray Regani. What we tried to do was get the restaurant liquor license because that's what he recommended. But he said, instead of building a wall, we would be able to basically build a wall about bar height and put a tabletop over it and that would pass. That was his recommendation, which we did. And we've had two other agents from the Liquor Commission come by since and tell us that that's not okay. If we had known that originally, we probably would have just tried to file for the cafe license. But, and I'm not trying to pass the buck or anything like that. But it was, it was under, it was our understanding that just having a wall at bar height with a tabletop on top of it would pass as a wall and thereby meet the requirements of a restaurant license. But now we found out that it actually doesn't.
So this came about from someone from the, from the state liquor commission?
Yeah, we started doing renovations in March, I'm sorry, in April of 2016. We didn't open until October 13th of 2016. So we had, we were open for about a month before the first agent came in. And then in the second month, the second agent came in and that's when we started this paperwork to try to get a cafe license.
All right. The reason I'm asking you that question is we haven't heard that before. You know, I think we've had through the years, maybe two cafe, people looking to have a cafe instead of a restaurant. So I was wondering why they might have kind of singled you out right now and started doing that, you know? Because I...
I know that the establishment that we purchased this location from had a very similar situation. They, I guess, had a workaround where they built a wall that would kind of fold up against, I mean, they basically just kind of cheated a little bit. But it was a wall that was on hinges that kind of rolled. And, you know, if somebody were to come in, they could roll it out to basically create a wall that was, I think, 10 or 12 feet high. And then they could just collapse it back. And so I know that they dealt with a very similar situation. I don't know if it's the same agents that go into the, that location or what, but...
Any other questions for, go ahead, Mr. Sota.
So you said the second agent caught it. Did the first agent catch it or no?
The first agent did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think really the only violation that we're in is that we're not within 1,500 feet of another cafe license, but we are within 1,500 feet of another restaurant license.
What'd you say? The restaurant total square footage is 600?
The total square footage is 1,600.
Oh, 1,600, okay.
Of, I'm sorry, of our location is 1,600, but yeah, the square footage of the restaurant area.
So what would the wall divide, how would the wall divide it? How many feet on one side and how many feet on the other? Do you know?
It would, in order to make it aesthetically look okay without kind of, you know, being even weirder than it would actually be, it would probably be about 700 on the restaurant side and 900 on the bar side.
Okay.
So let me ask you, what is your objective? Are you trying to keep things pretty much the way they are? You don't, you don't want to serve as much food? That's why you're looking for the cafe permit?
Well, our goal when we first set out in this venture was to be closer to 60, 40. 60% of our sales would be in the bar, 40 were going to be in the kitchen. But I think that the place that we've built and the location that we're in really just isn't conducive to a lot of food sales. And I only say that because we're in that area of Milford, the Devon area, where we're not really known for having great restaurants. I mean, we do get a lot of traffic and we are trying to change that. But we get a lot of traffic, we get a lot of customers, but it's just seems to be a lot of younger people that, you know, they don't come out until later at night. They don't have the budget to spend on food. You know, they might eat and then go out and it, we've tried just about everything since we've been open to increase our food sales and, not for lack of trying, but we haven't been able to. But I would say that what we really, we would like to just kind of keep it the way that it is because it's not, it's been a success so far, which I'm happy to say. And I don't want to go rocking the boat necessarily and kind of almost literally throw a wrench in the middle of it and kind of upset the whole, the whole thing that we've created here, so.
But help me understand something because maybe I'm, maybe I'm just not catching it. The wall issue is separate from the variance that you're coming here for, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the variance, yes, the variance is...
The variance for the 1,500 feet?
Yes.
Is what you're before us for. The liquor license stuff, we don't have any jurisdiction over, but you, you have to make a decision on whether or not you're going to conform with that and take that risk.
Correct, yeah.
Correct? So the only thing that's before us is the 1,500 feet from the Bridgeport Flyer?
Yep.
And this premises has already been in existence?
It has, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can clear up something.
Yeah.
Milford is unique in that it regulates liquor license types as well as restaurant uses. So it's, you have to keep the two separate in mind. This applicant is before you because he is a, he's a, he wants a cafe license that our regulations say has to be at least 1,500 feet from another liquor permit type. Now, the use is the use. It's the same use as it's always been. You know, it's a little bar restaurant, right? It's always been that way and it seems like that's the way it's going to be. But they want it, because they want to change their license type to cafe, the Milford zoning regulations now say, oh, okay, now you need to be 1,500 feet away for that license type.
And what was the license type that they were beforehand? They're just a restaurant?
Restaurant liquor.
And you don't want to stay a restaurant because it's detrimental in what way? He has to put the wall up?
Basically, yeah. Because the wall would...
There are, not to get too far into the weeds, but there, there's a lot of liquor commission arcania about permits and the physical appearance of establishments. They have this permit as opposed to that permit. And from what, from what I gather, you know, if he wants the cafe permit, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, state liquor people are saying your interior has to have a certain configuration in order to be granted that cafe license type.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
And from what I understand, there are other, and I don't know this for sure, but I was told that a restaurant like Stonebridge has a cafe license. I don't know when they were, weren't zoned for that, but they are easily within 1,500 feet of another restaurant license or another cafe license. I'm not sure when that decision was made or, you know, but I know that that situation does exist in other places in Milford, so I don't know if that helps my case at all or...
Mr. Chairman, now, Stonebridge was granted a variance by this board. They were undergoing renovations at the time and they, I believe they were advised by the state liquor commission that they needed a cafe license due to the type of interior renovations they were doing.
Okay, thank you.
And any questions for this gentleman? No? Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any further questions, board? Mr. Gettinger?
For Mr. Harris, is the only benefit to getting the cafe permit that he doesn't have to build the wall? Meaning if we do that for that reason, is there any potential unintended consequences?
If the applicant is granted the variance by this board for a cafe, he is, he may not get rid of the hot kitchen. Under a, under a cafe permit, state law says that you do not have to have a hot kitchen. However, our local zoning regulations, we don't allow bars per se. We do allow restaurants. Stonebridge has a cafe license, they have a hot kitchen. But this applicant, if he gets awarded a variance, would, under Milford zoning, would have to, would have to keep his hot kitchen. If he were to remove his hot kitchen, he'd be in violation of the regulations and we'd have to take corrective action. So one can have a cafe license and operate like Stonebridge as a restaurant. In another town, one can have a cafe license and be the neighborhood watering hole. But in Milford, we can't have those. So yeah, he can operate as a restaurant with a cafe license. He can operate his restaurant with his restaurant liquor license. It's up to this board to determine whether there's justification for the change of license type.
I'll just add that we have no desire to remove the kitchen. One of my partners is a chef. He's made all the menus for the SBC Group, the Sitting Duck, tons of other restaurants where our goal is to get the kitchen up and running and be more of a restaurant at a certain point. But we have no desire to just be a watering hole by any means.
Mr. Vasino, I'm glad you had a question.
I was wondering if you could state for the board the legal hardship that you have for this application?
I mean, I, I don't know if we necessarily have any legal hardship. I guess what I would say is that if all the time and money that we've spent putting into this between me and my partners and I guess all the struggles that we've gone through, it would really be a shame to have, I guess, our grand picture and everything that we had planned on really just kind of, not necessarily taken from us, but I feel like this will have some sort of negative effect on our bottom line, whatever our net sales will be probably six months from now. Ideally, this would be a great place to go in the summer. We plan on ultimately maybe doing something outside, maybe building a deck or something like that. We really want to try to make the area better. I feel like we've, in the short amount of time that we've been open, we've done a lot of good for Devon. We get a younger crowd, especially that restaurant in general. We get a lot of, well, I would say we get less unsavory people than I know that the previous establishment did. As far as legal hardship, I don't think that we have actually experienced much, or if any.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions before we close this hearing? No? Okay. Okay, this hearing's closed. We'll have a decision for you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Comments open for discussion?
I don't have a problem with this. I mean, you know, it's just a technicality and it's, it's the state of Connecticut, you know? So you don't want to go putting a wall up in a restaurant, walling off 900 feet and 700 feet, you know what I mean? And this would help them out. And it's been a bar and a restaurant for as long as I can remember.
Any other comments? Mr. Gettinger?
Sure, I'm glad Mr. Sota led off with that because that was my feeling as well. I don't have any problem with it. I think if the only thing that he's trying to do is stop from having to build a wall in the middle of his restaurant, I see no issue with that.
Thank you. Mr. Vasino?
Even though we can't come up with a legal hardship for this case?
The hardship is it was put, it was built too close to another restaurant.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? Who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Sota, reason please.
Based on the hardship that, you know, he's going to, it's close to another restaurant and he has no control over that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Happy? Abstain? Mr. Gettinger?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm against the motion.
Okay. I'm with the motion, but the motion fails. We're going to have enough to carry. Motion failed, sir. I'm sorry. We have three, three voted for you and we have one abstained and you need four votes to pass, so.
Item number three. 20 Candem Street, MPB 24 slash 397 slash 5 in an R5 zone. Israel DeJesus, agent for Moni Tith, owner. Vary section 3 dot 1 dot 4 dot 1. North side yard setback to 3 where 5 required. Vary section 6 dot 3 dot 2. Expansion of non-conforming structure to construct a two-story 10 and 1/2 by 24 addition.
Good evening. How are you guys? As you mentioned, my name is Arisal and I'm here to represent...
We just need you to pull your microphone a little closer. Thank you.
Is that good? Okay. So I'm here to represent Moni Tith. I do basic business consulting, helping homeowners with things like this, educating them and walking them through the process as much as I can, as best as I can, so. They're not here unfortunately, so I will try to answer the questions to the best of my ability. They purchased this home in November of 2010. Shortly thereafter, the husband along with family members built an addition. Took them about six months to build this addition. And approximately a couple of months ago, I want to say three, four months ago, he came to me with this letter of the variance and asked if I could assist them. The last meeting, there were some plans that we had submitted that did not get to circulate. I think that hopefully they are there now and they have the elevations like I believe you requested. So hopefully it's everything you guys need.
Mr. Chairman, the floor plans are in the file. If everybody doesn't already have a copy of them.
They're in the file, okay. We'll take a look, we'll take a look for them. Mr. Sota?
First of all, second night now from last month, why aren't your clients here?
Honestly, they run, the wife runs a business and the husband is away.
Okay, so you're telling me that this, this addition was built seven years ago when they bought the house?
Yes, it was, yes, yep.
I'll tell you what, I drove by it and that looks like brand new work to me.
Oh, no, 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 I can assure you that wasn't...
I'm telling you, it's, it's not seven years old. There's not even mold on that or anything.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can show you receipts.
There's still primer on the trim boards that hasn't even discolored.
Yeah, no, I can show, I can show receipts if need be. You know, the materials that were purchased as backup information to support that they did build this a while ago.
Do you have any of those, those receipts?
I don't have them with me, but I definitely can supply those, absolutely.
But receipts, Joe, don't mean anything. You can get receipts for anything.
I would have to agree with Mr. Sota, not to be combative, but it does look like it's a brand-new addition to me. I mean, this board makes a, a point of going out and looking at the applications. I would, I would find it hard to believe from the eye test that it's seven years old, ma'am.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from.
Mr. Chairman, sort of like try to keep people on track here. Whether it was built seven years ago or one years ago?
It was five years ago.
Maybe interesting, but the fact is it was built without a variance or a permit. That's the issue before you, so.
Well, it just goes to them being truthful with us, you know?
I mean, if it's, if it's seven years old, it just means it was built without a variance or a permit seven years ago.
It was five years ago, by the way. By the time they finished the work and stuff, it was about five years ago.
Mr. Harris, you said the deck doesn't need a variance, but it's only 4.2 feet to the property line.
The deck, the deck can be four feet from the lot line in that zone.
Okay.
Because it's a projection off the house.
I thought it was five foot.
No, the, the house has to be set back five feet, but a projection such as a deck can be four feet in that zone.
Okay, I didn't know that.
On that side of the house. It's a five-foot side and a 10-foot side.
How much is, how much of the, is in question here in the back part? Words at three feet?
Well, the house, as you're looking on the survey, that rear corner of the house, that's three feet from the lot line, it should be five feet.
How many feet did you say that was built? How long was it?
24 feet by eight foot and the two stories high. And then there's a deck also, but that doesn't, that doesn't count.
Okay, what other questions do we have here?
So, none of the contractors told him he needed a permit?
He didn't have any contractors. It was him and his family that did it together, so. So, it kinda took a little bit longer than what an addition probably should take from my experience. Additions usually don't take six months.
So, we don't even know if this was built to code or anything?
I know, that was another discrepancy that I also brought up to the homeowner. I mean, he has construction experience because he was a laborer, but I can't guarantee that, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, actually, Mr. Harris, what do we do in a situation like this? We don't know if it's code, no permits. How do we, how do we move forward on this? We're really in a quandary here on this.
The board's options are the same as in every other case. You, you look for a hardship that's unique to this property. If you find a hardship that's unique to this property, you can grant a variance. If you don't find a hardship that's unique to this property, you should deny the variance. That's the legal standard.
Well, my notes here say that the review of the larger area shows that there are many non-conforming lots. This is a non-conforming lot in minimum size and use. And that would lead me to believe that we don't have a legal hardship.
The DPO, the Department's Administrative Advisory tends to be, you know, we, we just try to present the board with facts. Here's the facts.
But for when we, yeah, when we drive around the area. I mean, this lot doesn't look any different in size and makeup from any of the other lots that are, that are there. So, I'm not seeing a uniqueness.
I assume you're talking to your fellow board members?
I did talk into the microphone.
I think he's addressing it to you because it is quite a few questions on this one. Any other questions to this, to this lady, Mr. Soda?
So, what are you claiming is the hardship?
I mean, the only hardship is the homeowner just wasn't educated. He didn't know the permit process. He, he was under, when I sat with him, he was under.
No, the hardship goes with the land.
Yeah, no, there is no hardship except that he built it for a child that, you know, he was moving into the house, so I don't. Other than that, there was nothing else. I mean, I'm just being very honest and, because there's nothing else to say. He just built it for a child that he was gonna, it's living there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, anyone else speaking on this application? Any opposition on this application?
Mr. Chairman, just to elaborate a little bit, because you asked you about your option, asked me about your options, just to elaborate a little further. If the board approves, then the board approves. And the applicant goes and gets her permits or whatever she needs to legalize the work done. If the board denies, then the applicant has to, according to the survey, shave two feet off that wall and then get the permit. So, she can get a permit to shave two feet off the wall and then legalize everything.
Okay, thank you.
It's really either or.
Go ahead, do you have, do you have a question?
Would you be able to get more information for us and perhaps talk to them about the code work and, and the hardship? It's, talk to them about looking at the property and having somebody come in and take a look at it? Would you like to?
Yeah, we can, I can definitely comply with whatever needs to be done, whatever information, additional information. I can tell you, I've asked them numerous times what their hardship was and, they are Asian, so they really, there is a language barrier there. And just, they just don't understand the concepts and whatnot. So, I don't know if we would be able to draw hardship from them.
I, I don't know how much more that would add.
But I can definitely have somebody.
Would help with the application. Right now, the application is they built it without a variance, so that's pretty much it. So, we mentioned the code, but if it's built to code, but that's almost, almost beside the point right now. Okay, any other questions? For this lady? No? Okay. This hearing's closed.
Unfortunately, we don't have a legal hardship with the land for this.
No, I, I don't see any at all.
Any other discussion? We need a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Mr. Soda, denied because of?
There's no, there's no legal hardship.
Motion to deny. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Happy? Ms. Happy? With the motion? Press, please, would you press your button and say you're with the motion?
With the motion.
Mr. Gettiger?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm with the motion.
I'm with the motion tonight.
Item number four, 9 Dixon Street, MPB 37 slash 520 in an R7.5 zone. Joseph Hannan, agent for Dominic Testani, owner. Vary section 4 dot 1 dot 4. Front yard projection to 7.4 where 16 permitted to build new porch.
Good evening. Uh, Joe Hannan, 110 Beach Avenue, here, Milford, Connecticut, here for Testani's. Okay, I'm here this evening to ask the board for a front yard setback so that the Testani family can build a open front porch across the front of their house. If you look at the plan, you'll see that there is an indentation in the house right now. That is where the, where the front porch will go. The existing setback for the house now is, you know, the house was built in the 1920s, before the, before we had zoning. And the existing setback for the house right now is 7.4 to the front line of the building. The house isn't totally parallel with the street, so our left corner of our open porch will end up 7.15 from the street. In Woodmont, all the houses are finished with front porches to make, you know, the inhabitants able to enjoy our sea breezes. And the Testanis would like to have, to have that front porch. Our hardship is that the house was built in the 20s before zoning. And if you look at the house, pretty much majority of the house already lies in frontline setbacks. As you can see over on Holly Avenue, it's only 1.6 feet from the corner of the, of the, of the property. But this was something that was done in the 20s. So, we just want to maintain a frontline of the building uniformly to what, what is there now. Along with the mailings that we sent out to the neighbors, we sent out postcards for, to be returned. We have 10 postcards that were returned to us with no objections to this front porch. Uh, we also brought it in front of the board, the borough, the borough of Woodmont. The wardens and the burgesses, they, I have a letter from them stating that they, they have no objections to this front porch and they feel that it would fit very well in the neighborhood. Should I give you the letter and the cards? So, I think that's it.
Okay, so, this whole house has been remodeled. Like, because we, like one of our board members said before, we, we go out and we take a look at any of these applications so we know, you know, what they're all about. The house had been remodeled and like you said, it's been sitting that way for all these years. By adding this proposed open porch across the whole frontage though, it's just adding to, to nonconformity and right now the, does this house conform right now, Mr. Harris?
Uh, no, it's pre-existing nonconforming, the structure.
So, we, we actually need a, I think, did you mention a hardship to us? We need a pretty strong hardship on this.
Yeah, I brought the hardship up to the board that there was, you know, the house was built in the 20s and this is what, this is exactly what the, you know, why we're here and they, they all agreed. And going down the street, pretty much every house is very similar, very close to the street line. And the, you know, the borough was total in agreements that it would be fine and it would fit in with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any further questions for this gentleman? This hearing's closed. What do we think? Do we have a legal hardship here, actual hardship?
Well, I, I definitely think you have a hardship. The way the house was positioned so close to the road back in the 20s, I mean, it's not their fault the way the house was positioned, so I think you got a good case for a legal hardship here. And he's staying within the footprint of the house, you know, squaring it off and not, and the house is set a little, you know, diagonally on the, it's not square with the property line, so that's why he's off on that one corner, but, you know, I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Vasino, you have something to say?
I, I do, thank you. I'm glad that he's staying within the footprint of the house, that he's not increasing anymore the nonconformity.
Any other comments? We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the way the house is positioned on the lot.
We have a motion to approve and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Happy? Mr. Gettiger?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved.
Happy Bell.
Item number five, 81 Morningside Drive, MPB 39 slash 616 slash four in an R10 zone. David Minter, agent for Dan Rubino, owner. Vary section 4 dot 1 dot 4. Front yard projection to 4.4 where 21 permitted to build a new portico.
Yes, and I am David Minter and the owner, Dan Rubino, has decided to attend. The owner, Dan Rubino, is, is also attending. So, we gave our hardship and, can you hear me? Do you have all the information? I turned it in today, right? Yes. So, with that said, is there questions as to what we're proposing?
What are you looking for? You're looking for a roof over this front set of stairs?
Yes.
Simple as that?
Simple as that. We would like to project out with the deck.
And the size, the size of that roof is, we see it right here.
Existing nonconforming house. I mean, it's, the lot is very large, but it was built in 1918, I believe, and obviously close to the water and we would just like to extend for a porch. I think Mr. Rubino would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, thank you and good evening. Yeah, you know, basically I purchased the house about four and a half years ago. Did a lot of work internally. And what I didn't do was to do anything in the front of the house. Uh, the front of the house, it's a little bit odd because on Morningside Drive, it's the corner, it's a corner lot, Morningside and Thompson Hill. It's a very steep, steep block going down Thompson Hill to Morningside Drive. Uh, the front door, the front of the house, it opens inward, but as soon as you leave, you step down, there's a step and the step down is about 10 inches directly from, from the foot of the, of the doorway. Uh, that is an amazing hazard. Right now, what exists is a, a brick step structure about 33 inches high and about 36 inches deep and about 12 feet wide. But as soon as you, again, as soon as you open the door, you step down and it's a 10-inch drop. And then there are two other steps which are irregular, 7-inch and I think it's 10 inches down to the ground. And it's also dilapidated and it's somewhat dangerous, so it has to be entirely redone. So, what I'd like to do is to have a landing outside of the front door, a safe landing or sort of a reasonably sized landing and maintain the width of it. The width is approximately 12 feet. I like to bring the landing out to eight feet in order to get the best, the views and to appreciate, you know, some of the aesthetics involved. And then on top of that, we're thinking about putting a, a, a covered roof. Okay, there you go, but it's all gonna be open. Uh, but the primary thing would be the landing since basically it's, right now, it's a hazard. Uh, it is on a corner, so we have a, a side entrance which also looks like a front entrance. But the address is on Morningside Drive and the post goes directly to, to the front door. In terms of the hardship, the hardship, I guess it is pre-existing and it's nonconforming. It was built in 1918. Uh, it is on a corner lot. The topography is a bit strange because it's very, very steep. So, what we need to do is just to extend it out so it could be at a safe, safe distance. So, that's what you have in, in front of you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for this gentleman? No? Okay. I have to ask this even though there's no people behind you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here opposed? Any, any further questions for these gentlemen? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, your thoughts? It's, uh.
I mean, I, I do think that there was ample room behind the house if the topography was right. So, I think that they obviously built the house in that location up towards the front. I think if they had the opportunity, they would have moved it back. I don't necessarily see a problem with the eight-by-12-foot landing area in the front of the house.
I don't, I don't have a problem with this application. Mr. Soda?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's basically the same as the one we just heard.
Correct.
It's the way the house is positioned on the lot, that's the hardship, so I don't have a problem with this.
Any other comments? Motion, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of how the house was positioned on the lot.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Happy?
With the motion.
Mr. Gettiger?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it passes.
All set, sir.
Great, thank you so much. Good night, guys.
Any new business this evening? New business, okay. Old business? No? Okay, we're moving right along here. Staff update? Any staff update? Anything happening? No?
I just, hang on. I just wanted to point out that there are, everybody has private contact information and a meeting schedule. And just to not put that in the slide keep when you clean up.
Acceptance of the minutes from January 10th? Did we review the minutes? Everything's in order? All in favor?
I reviewed them, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. The only other thing? The only other thing is I will not be here next month. Mr. Vasino, John Vasino will be the acting chairman next month and Sarah Ferranti will be our secretary. Other than that, any other, any other business or motion to adjourn?
Do we have a count for applications for next month yet? By any chance?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.